Tonight, this public meeting of the city council is recorded on a Zoom link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap to request to speak. Please use either of those options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. This is our non-discrimination statement opener for the city council meeting. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. This evening, we have Ward Two Councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman, Ward Four Councillor Frank Majota, Ward One Councillor Scott Memart, Councillor-at-Large Jeff Worthley, Ward Three Councillor Marjorie Grace, Councillor-at-Large Jason Grow, and Ward Five Councillor and Council Vice President Sean Nolan. We also have our city clerk present, Grace Poirier, and we have the CFO Connor McCorkle on coming in online, and I'm not seeing anyone else that's going to be speaking to us, and we have the mayor also. I am Tony Gross, the Council President, Councillor-at-Large, and Sean Nolan will be doing the roll call, and Sean Nolan will -- do we have a flag here?
We do.
Perfect. Sean Nolan will be doing the flag, and I don't know unless we want to do a general moment of silence for the state of the world.
(laughter) (music) (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
Oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Do we have anyone in the room who would like to speak? Step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Is this working? Great. Oops. Thank you. Sultanate Berdikiva, 33 Middle Street. Massachusetts residents pay some of the highest electricity rates in the country, ranking in the top five states. Across Massachusetts, residents have complained to the State Department of Public Utilities that their energy costs are unsustainable and untenable. In some cases, the high cost of energy is the reason for leaving the state. So many low and moderate income households in Massachusetts, including Gloucester, struggle with their energy burden, which is the percentage of a household's income spent on energy bills. According to MAPC, in Massachusetts, the average energy burden is around 3%. However, for low-income households, it averages about 10% and can reach up to 31% in some areas. This means that some families, including those in Gloucester, spend nearly a third of their income on energy bills, often having to choose between utilities and essentials like food, rent, or medicine. To protect against fluctuating electricity rates in the state, Gloucester started doing something amazing, a community choice aggregation program, which is now in its sixth year, I believe, or fifth. I think it's sixth. The Gloucester 100% local green option uses Class One renewable energy certificate source from solar, wind, anaerobic digestion, and low-impact hydropower in New England, and that is something we should be proud of. As a beneficiary of the Gloucester 100% local green option, we have been locked in at 14% per kilowatt hour rate versus the wild fluctuations offered by National Grid, which reached up to more than $0.33 per kilowatt hour last year. As the contract for the community electricity aggregation in Gloucester expires this December, I hope it is renewed at that rate or lower, preferably, to help Gloucester residents keep their energy rates down as they struggle with higher cost of living in here, including taxes, home insurance, and other expenses. And I would like to make a request to the city and Mayor Verga that we should not only renew the community electricity aggregation program at a reasonable rate, but also market it widely throughout the community. Many residents have no idea about this program that could help lower their energy costs as well as reduce their carbon footprint. Much like the MBTA mandate or the comprehensive plan, the electricity aggregation program must be advertised beyond the city's website or the Facebook page. Why not use electronic signs, billboards, flyers in stores and gas stations, or text messages to residents to encourage people to sign up to the community choice program? I think that will also -- the more subscribers we get, the more likely we're going to get a good renewal at a good reasonable rate. So let's admit it, many Gloucester residents, especially the elderly, struggle with navigating the city's website. Others do not use social media, and most folks do not subscribe to Gloucester.
And say it's.
Daily Times because -- the newspaper because they find it expensive, believe it or not. So I think we could do better with the outreach about this program and other important events in the city that affect us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Sultanate, just for the record, your name and address for the --
I apologize. I apologize.
Anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak at oral communications? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, it's Patricia Shriver, Lewis Court in Gloucester. So the Fisherman's Statue on the Boulevard is an iconic landmark for the city of Gloucester, so it would be in the interest of the city to help to ensure, to protect its beauty and protect the surrounding infrastructure. I'm inquiring if the city will put some clear, large Plexiglas sheets facing the water and have them secured using the metal loop hooks that are used to secure the American flags, and place the Plexiglas during the winter months only to protect the banisters, reducing repainting them, reduce corrosion on pipes in the catch basins. As you know, seawater takes a toll on pipes. Protect infrastructure and minimize seawater damaging the generous gardeners' soil and plants that line the boulevard, and minimize seaweed and debris that end up on the boulevard and reduce cleanup efforts. These Plexiglas sheets can be removed after winter. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Beverly Palmachi, Eight Calmoff Avenue. I have a simple question. I thought it had a simple answer, but apparently it doesn't. I've reached out to a couple of councillors, but holiday weekend, so I thought I'd come here and ask it. (laughter) The question hopefully goes with you. But we seem to not have any place for individual ward members to meet. I don't understand that. I know Lanesville has a community center, and I'm asking questions. I spoke to Pam Toby, who I guess is now considered the constituent service person, and the best she could say was, well, we could go to City Hall, but there would be costs involved. And I find it very odd that constituents should have to pay for the use of a city-owned meeting place because it's our taxes who support these places, and I don't think it should be a matter of cost. We don't need to have the whole city hall. We can have, I'm sure, a much smaller place. But considering what's been going on in the city for the past couple of years and the different issues, we really need to get together as wards, maybe even a couple of wards at a time if they're wards that are being impacted by a particular issue, so that we can get together without having to pay to do so. My question. You have an answer? (laughter) Marjorie, end up, are you answering?
No, no, there's no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
President, it might be helpful. Not allowed to respond.
Right, yeah, well, it's -- yeah, it says, you know, make their statement without debate, so we don't -- there's no back and forth. Yeah, he did. He was trying to help. Yeah. But email. Anyone else in the building? Anyone online? We have one panelist with a raised hand, Marjorie. (laughter) So I'm -- I didn't. Brian Lloyd's on too, but they're not part of the meeting, so I kind of -- Oh, Kenny Costa has joined us also. Also, so. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Presentations, commendations, a presentation by Mayor Verga on ARPA spending.
We good to go? Good evening, councillors and others. Good to be here tonight. Sent over to you earlier today were a couple of sheets. On the call who's going to assist me is, out in Zoom land, is our CFO Connor McCorkle, and he's going to bring up on the screen shortly the -- what's on the city's website. We've updated the ARPA page, and he's going to sort of navigate through it. I'll go over what's on the spreadsheet because it's got more detail. But first, I just want to start out with a little history. During the pandemic, the Congress created the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, and we put together in May of '22, a few months after I became mayor, the COVID Local Recovery Funds Listening Group. And so I want to give a big thank you to them for the work they did going around the city virtually and meeting with constituents to get an idea of where they thought the money should go. And that money was $23,235,468. And the Listening Group consisted of Carl Guston as the chair, Jerry Oppenheim, Gretel Sealy and Tom Bell from the EDIC, Joel Favazza, Paul Romary from Capital Improvement Advisory Board, and Councillor Gross. I also want to thank all the community partners who came forward with their thoughts of how the money could be used, the Affordable Housing Trust for the work they've done over the past several months, and of course, a lot of the money was spent on city projects, so I want to give a big thank you to the DPW. All of the management and all the folks who actually do the real work did great work over the last couple of years on some of these projects. So if Connor can share his screen, I'll have him bring up the page from the city's website, which is a pretty convenient way to see what's going on. You see on the right-hand side are the categories based on what was the categories required to be eligible for this funding from the federal government. And then if you click on -- Connor, if you don't mind, just sort of scroll around to a couple random boxes. The parking study, which was presented, I think, about a month ago, three weeks ago, that was there. (inaudible) covered Gloucester, was one of the community partners that applied for funding. That was for their strategic plan and a brand guide for downtown. Maybe a couple more, Connor. The color's difficult to see on the screen, and I think it was Green Street Playground. All the work moving Meadows Field, the money that was borrowed during the East Fets project was insufficient to cover the work at Green Street Playground, so we used some COVID funds for that. And of course, the big enchilada is the secondary water treatment plant, which we've put forward way back when, about $10 million. So far, this is what has been spent during the design phase. So Connor, if you could just bring up on the screen the spreadsheet. While he's doing that, over the last couple of years, we had press releases, news stories, and chats at the city council about what we were putting the money towards, and Stalin while he gets that sheet up. Arts and Culture was the first category on the spreadsheet. It's alphabetical, in no other particular order. So you'll see on here, the 400th Anniversary Celebration, $100,000 went to that, which I think was a pretty good investment.
Can Connor enlarge that?
Rolling around, so it looks like he's on it. Thank you, Connor. 400th Anniversary Celebration was a celebration and also a great economic boom to the city. So I thought that was money spent. Well, the arts inventory, as we speak, we have a consultant go around checking on all the city arts so we can get a handle on what we actually own. Just as a point of interest, we have one of our WPA murals over at the Noah Building. We have a couple of Fitz Henry Lanes at the Cape Ann Museum, and we have a few other works that are spread around. So we want to make sure we have it all documented so there's no question about the ownership, and it's easy to track later. The Bronze Planters were in the news. We put up $65,000, and it was fundraising for a couple, and the -- thanks to Senator Dittar, Rep Ferrante, the others were paid for. The machine, it's spelled weird, but that's what it is, is the little structure over at the -- what do they call it? The Cam Green, Cape Ann Green, over off of -- help me on the street, Poplar Street. And if you haven't seen it, you should go over and check it out. And then, of course, the Tablet Rock cleanup was part of that. Community initiatives, we had a -- an application process for that. We had put up about $1 million to help out our community partners, but as you can see here, most of it's self-explanatory. Action had a program that was going to help with some of their job training. The waterproofing project, if you've been down Prospect and Main over the last few weeks, you saw the sidewalks blocked off. They were working on that project. I mentioned Discover Gloucester already from the webpage. Maritime Heritage, Gloucester Maritime Heritage was their dock. GMGI was for their expansion project. North Shore Health Project was just their continuing work on what they do to help the community with addiction issues. The Open Door was their expansion project. Salem Mission Community Award is actually the Grace Center. They're now headquartered in Salem. Voices for Action Climate was the one award made by the previous administration, and that was the Harvard study that's been a lot of talk about for looking at the 100-year hurricane. I don't know if you saw the models for that and all the work they did. And to the credit of the previous administration, they had reached out to me because I'd already been elected and asked if it was okay, and I certainly supported the project. Wellspring House was an expansion of some of their properties, their units, to help their clients. Next category is economic development. We did the energy study that was through the EDIC. We've talked about before, the city of Gloucester and the Cape in general has an insufficient supply of energy flowing here, and this study was put together to help us with a little bit of a proof to convince National Grid to upgrade. We're not there yet, by the way. Harbor Plan Implementation is at $100,000. The Harbor Plan has come back from the state. It's now back in the hands of the Harbor Planning Committee, and they've got some work to do on that. Parking Study, we talked about already. Wayfinding and signage, throughout the city, if you walk around, you'll see remnants from the Toby Administration, from the Bell Administration, from the Kirk Administration. What this is trying to do is unify our signage, pointing in the right -- people in the right directions, and have it all make sense and match. General Government, we have -- one of the categories that was in the ARPA rules was communities could put up to $10 million into this category, which basically offsets other government spending. But we still had to make sure that it's trackable, because I didn't mention in my intro as a reminder, we have to have all these funds obligated by the end of this calendar year, December 31, 2024, and they must be spent by December 31, 2026. What we awarded to our partners, we had to make sure that it was A, eligible, and B, they would be able to spend it in time. And when I get to the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm going to talk a little more detail about that. So administration, it's not going to my office. That's just the administration of the program. There's a lot of bookkeeping that has to be done for this. We have to make sure that we are not zinged in the end and giving money to someone or them spending it or us spending it where it's not allowed. So that is what that category is for. The American Legion, this is something that's been talked about for many, many years. As anybody driving by can see, the Legion is in terrible condition on its exterior. I'm lucky that I'm the mayor who actually had some funding that could be spent to fix this project. The project is now fenced off, the building's now fenced off, and the scaffolding is in place, and we're looking at October for completion date of the exterior. Capital Asset Management, we, up until recently, had a program for our -- I think you might have had a presentation from the Water Department about their new devices on the pipes and on the hydrants that help us track if there's leaks and things like that. The program we had was discontinued as far as support, so this is to replace that program. What we'd like to get eventually is a asset management program that covers everything in the city, every machine, every vehicle, and has -- so we know exactly when it's supposed to be maintained, exactly what parts are needed, et cetera. That would be a few more zeros on that number, but this gets our foot in the door. Comprehensive Plan, we've talked about, obviously, that's a big one. We're hoping to wrap up in the next few months. Harbor Master Audit, when we had some issues at the Harbor Master Office a few months ago, we did say at that time that once we have the new players in place, we would like to have an audit to make sure we are putting the right people in the place and making sure that everything is up to snuff in the way it should be to help them succeed. Neighborly Reporting, and we're going to skip to the last two, Tableau are related to the whole ARPA categorization and tracking. City Promotions, we had a contract with a benchmark who helped us with some of the promotions for the city. The contract expired at the end of the calendar year, sorry, the fiscal year. This is a one-month contract as we determine whether we're going to move forward and how we're going to move forward. Affordable Housing Trust, that was a big one we talked about. $1.5 million was put towards that. They had an application process over the last several months. They had six finalists, three of the final -- I don't think they reported to you, but they had a public meeting about it and it was summarized, but three of them were ready for primetime. We felt pretty comfortable that it was trackable and eligible. Those awards should be going out once the contracts are written up. The other three, I was unsure and uncomfortable about awarding because I wasn't sure that they'd be able to spend it in time. So they've been reached out to and asked to, maybe not sharpen their pencils, but get their ducks in a row, and if indeed they are able to get the money and track the money, they'll get the money. If not, it'll roll back to the Affordable Housing Trust to put into other areas that can use the money by the end of the fiscal, sorry, fiscal calendar 2026. Infrastructure, Annex Reorganization, if you'd been over the Annex building on Pond Road, it was a bit crowded over there. They recently took out all of the rolls of plans that were at the back of the building department and had them scanned, and we took advantage of that new space and moved things around to put in a new series of cubicles that helped fill up this -- give our employees who were basically on top of one another a little more space to work with and not be in nomads going from desk to desk. Dale Avenue Sidewalks, that was done last year, the cement on both sides of Dale Ave, that is the direct result of a senior citizen coming into my office with a bloody face who her walker got caught in a little divot on the sidewalk, and she took a tumble, and it made sense that one of the focuses of my work since I've been mayor is to look at the sidewalks around the senior housing and make sure that they are safe for our people with walkers and wheelchairs to get around. General Paving, you recall, we did that, one of the first things I did along with the $10 million for the wastewater plant, and if you drive around the city, you'll see all the work that Mike Hale and the DPW and our contractors did over the last two and a half years. Pump Station Maintenance, we have a lot of old infrastructure throughout this city, and we have a lot of need for our stations, some of them that are at or in some cases a little below sea level. Grew Pump Bypass, you recall, that was in the news, I believe, last winter. We had a couple failures. We had to rent some, and this is an opportunity to try to catch up. And then the big enchilada there is the secondary wastewater treatment plant, originally $10 million, now it's $10,790,000 and some change. The reason for that is, as we went over this list today, we looked at what was unassigned, and we just assigned to a few areas, and one in particular was this, because the idea is to try to reduce that, what we have to borrow and try to keep the rate down as much as we can. And I said it already in another topic, but this one, we definitely have a long way to go. Veolia, our contractor, contract, this is to help offset the water and sewer infrastructure, sorry, water and sewer rate for those two revenue -- why am I drawing a blank on the name? Yes, that one. Thank you. Fox and Rec, Fox and Open Space, as I said earlier, we did a lot of work around the city. Beach Accessibility are the Mobi Mats, which we added two, sorry, three more to Good Harbor, one more to Winger Sheek. East Gloucester Open Space, we have, this was to help with the design, and just as a spoiler alert, the councillor, the council, a few years back, borrowed $4.5 million on a second loan order. First, we had the money to build the new East Fets School. The things that didn't qualify for MSBA reimbursement were put on that second loan order, if I believe, $4.5 million. That included the swing space at St. Anne's, moving the Meadows Field over to Green Street, and to do the work at the East Gloucester Open Space. It was not enough. This money here has so far gone towards the plans. So the spoiler alert is, we are going to figure out how we fund the East Gloucester site. You've seen the renderings. They're really sharp. I think it's going to be a great spot, but we have to figure out how we can fund it when that comes ready. Green Street Park Reconstruction, as I mentioned, that was part of the deal of the new East Fets School, and the funding that was there was insufficient, but we sent over $300,000 towards, from ARPA to help complete that project. And if you haven't been by there yet, you really need to. It really is looking spectacular over there. Pulse Hill Lot Consolidation, there are several different lots around the area that we own at Pulse Hill, or we own several separate lots. This is to combine them, hiring a consultant to pull them together so we can get it as one contiguous lot. Stage Fort Park Accessibility, that's the walking path that was put up on the backside of Stage Fort leading up to the Cannons. And of course, the Vietnam Memorial was another one that has really made a difference to a lot of veterans, and I'm very proud of that, and especially the Stage Fort Park area in general is looking great. Public Health, Biobot Testing, we funded that last year with some ARPA money, and in this current fiscal year, we're looking to fund it to go forward. It's to help them identify, basically, they do a little dip test, and Tony probably knows better than I how this works, but to see what's in the water at the wastewater plant, and they can give us an idea of what we're dealing with in terms of COVID, or it could be used for other issues too, opioids and things. Gloucester Public Health Needs, assess the needs assessment, self-explanatory, for the Gloucester Health Department. And the schools, you recall, you voted in the budget to include, oh, well, some vote, but part of the discussion was $1 million from ARPA would be used to help close the gap in the school's budget, and this is basically how it breaks down control systems, help with our district transportation, district tuition, bus leases, and of course, the school resource officers, which do a great job in our schools. So in a nutshell, that's what we have. I'm happy to answer any questions I can. Connor's out there, if there's any questions about mechanics of how ARPA works, but we're here to inform you as best we can.
Councillors, questions? Dylan Benson.
So just so -- well, this is really loud, and I do project already, so. So my question is regarding, like, the total amount. So for ARPA, we only have $3,600,000. So my question is regarding like the total amount, so for Opera, we only have $3,664,018. Is that what we have total, or is that just what we've encumbered?
That's remaining encumbrances, so some of these things have not started. If you notice, I guess I should have mentioned that, there's the three columns, the what's allocated for my office, what the actual expense is so far, and what is remaining in those encumbrances.
Okay.
So there is a chance that when, as we close in on completion in some of these projects, there may be money left over, and we'll have to figure out, well, I'll tell you where I'm going to put it, this wastewater plant.
Okay, so would there be any thought of maybe putting a little bit towards helping some of our small businesses on Main Street in any way? Has there been any thought of that?
We've done that through other means, you know, with like, say, the pop-up shops, the signage program, the Discover Gloucesters activities for the strategic plan. So I think helping the businesses and the residents, the best way to do it is to keep that sewer rate under control, because it also impacts our borrowing ability. Right now, we're on the hook for, even though we even borrowed a nickel, we still have $206 million less dollars we could borrow until we start to pay that down and pay down some of our other debt.
I had a couple more, but if you.
I just, I wanted to know when Green Street Playground was, or the softball field was going to be live and.
The playground itself is, should be open, ready for business. The field should be this fall. They wanted to get through a spring growing season, so we should be good to go in the fall. I honestly don't know when the season ends, but you know, if it's still decent weather, people can get out there and utilize the field. It might be too late for the leagues for this season, but that's the plan.
Yeah, and I've seen people, the playground's up and running. I've been up there and talking to people in my ward, and it's, and it looks, it looks great, great job on all that were part of that, and look forward to the softball field opening up, and also the additional parking. And with that in vain, when will the bathroom be done? I know some folks had, since we're talking about that, some folks in the ward have been asking about that.
There was a pad put down near the field that's for porta-potties. And we have the infrastructure in place, basically the pipes, for a permanent bathroom. But as we talked about, looking at last budget, the, we don't have the cash to build the bathroom at this point. I'll just be very blunt, that's, you know, in light of nearly $4 million cuts from the cities and City Department, School Department's requests, and the layoffs we had, we just do not have that in the cards for the foreseeable future.
So the bathroom right now is off the, is not going to be constructed?
Permanent bathroom, yes. Like I said, the pad will be in place for porta-potties, down closer to the field.
Okay, that's helpful, and I'll be conveying that to people in the neighborhood and to the wider ward. My last question is about paving, it's, I'm looking at $1,754. That's not a lot for paving, would that go to something else, since that's, maybe that could fill maybe a pothole? I don't know the exact cost of a pothole, I'm not an expert on potholes, but just curious, like, is that, there's not much left there?
There's not, but that would be combined with the regular operating budget from the department. So it's not like we have to find a project that falls within $1,754.
Yeah, that was really what I was trying to get at, and I appreciate that, Mayor.
Val.
Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. So I just want to plant a seed about the importance, in my opinion, of the two or three electronic speeding signs. And that's something that I had put in last year during budget, was told that I would get that in free cash this year. We didn't have that, and I'm just passionate that those are, that's an extension of the Police Department, it's great for enforcement, it's a great way to track what's happening with speeding on all the different roads. And being the size of 21 miles, one is not adequate, in my opinion, and they're only like seven grand each. So I just ask that you keep an eye on that and anything you can do. I know that you also think that it's important, I know the Police Department does, as are my colleagues, so thank you.
Yeah, it would be, we can have another look at it, depending if there is free cash in the coming months, but as far as Opera goes, we're basically closing the book on
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your presentation and for your stewardship of the Opera Funds. Couple of questions, there's an uncertainty, at least for me, I thought that the field, sorry, I thought that the field at Green Street was a replacement of Meadows, which was covered under the override budget that was factored into that, and then the schools recently said that they came in $3 million under budget. So when I see the allocation for Green Street Field and the news that we're out of money for now for bathrooms, I thought that was factored into that equation.
There were two loan orders. One was for the school building, to build the new school, which were items that would be reimbursable by whatever the percentage was agreed with MSBA, a school building. And then the council at the time, which would have been, I don't know, 2019, whenever you guys voted, and I was, I was in retirement at that time, and they did that second loan order for things that were not reimbursable. So the leftovers that we were talking about is for that school side, which can only be used to pay down the loan, and is not eligible to go towards these because they weren't reimbursable to begin with.
I just want to make sure I understand that right, and it could be a Jeff Worthley problem. I thought we had money from that second loan authorization to replace Meadows Field as is, or all the amenities that came with it, and then, and replace the East Gloucester School, is that?
That was, that was my understanding, because again, we weren't here.
We weren't here.
That was the goal. Fast forward to when we started actually doing the projects with inflation and supply chain, it was by far insufficient to do the project, because we're out, that four and a half is gonezo, and so it just doesn't exist anymore. We could, an option which I really don't want to do, is to come back to the council and ask them to increase that loan order. But rather than do that, you know, we had the Opera Funds, we went beyond just Meadows Field, so it felt, made more sense to utilize Opera to expand the playground, the walking path, and all the other stuff.
That's right, I'm still, my understanding though is, the School Department said that they finished that building, the East Fett's building, $3 million under budget. Is that the part that could not be used for the field replacement? I just want to make sure I get this right.
Yes, correct. So two loan orders, I don't know what that number was, let's just say it was $80,000, $80 million, $80,000 or better. So $80 million over here, MSBA reimbursable, $4.5 million here for those three projects I mentioned, Swing Space, East Gloucester Site, and Green Street, Meadows/Green Street. Project comes in, finished over here, East Fett's is open, they, you know, ribbon-cutting and everybody's happy, and we didn't spend $80 million, we spent 78, 77 million. And these aren't the numbers. That $3 million can't be shifted over here, it just can't be, because it's a whole different purpose.
Because of the way the council wrote the, or the mayor's office wrote the loan authorization?
It's, there's more to it than that, it's just that, it's not, they had to have the two separate votes, because MSBA wasn't going to reimburse for those other three items.
Separate loan authorization, the $4.5 million, give or take, to replace Meadows, East Gloucester Site, all that has already been spent?
Correct, that's why we were dipping into Opera many months ago.
And dipping into Opera, even with that, it's still not enough to have bathrooms at the new site.
Right. I mean, that was, that was the intention before the economy went the way it went, and then we had the, the realization of what we saw was coming, you know, that, that light coming down, that's not a light at the end of the tunnel, that's a train, was the wastewater treatment plant and the actual cost. Because we were talking, when I first took office, of $100 million, you know, fast forward to them actually putting pen to paper, $206 million.
One more question, if I may. I'm seeing on the spreadsheet that you've allocated $23.2 million, we've spent 8.2, and then remaining encumbrance is $3 million, but there's a difference of $15 million. It might be accounting.
No, no, that's, that's a, that's a good question. Can we have Connor sort of weigh in on that?
Yeah, yeah, that was a question I was going to ask too, is where the delta is between the $11 million, that's between the spent and the encumbered, and what's, because I know that encumbered, and then there's other monies that are unencumbered, which are already allocated but not in our normal budget process, that's the way it works, so.
And Connor can articulate it much better than I.
Yeah, that's correct. So on this chart, you're seeing the actual expenses, you're seeing things that we can officially count as being encumbered with the Treasury, which means we have a contract and a purchase order in place. So the delta between the $23 million and the, and the combination of $8 million and $3 million is expenses that still need to have a contract and still need to have a purchase order opened by the end of the calendar year.
So if I could finish, so you're saying they're allocated, but because we don't have a purchase order, for example, it's not an expense yet?
We can't consider it committed with the Treasury yet, that's correct.
And my last question on this, most of these, from when I looked through that slide, which I thought was a very helpful tool to categorize them.
On the website, yes.
Yeah, it's really helpful. A lot of that hasn't been spent yet, and the question is, it's a two-part question, do you have any concern that it won't be spent on time, allocated in time or spent on time? Secondly, is there a sort of second tier, if these things don't come to fruition in, you know, by the end of this calendar year, do we have a November trigger to say, here's the next things that we could fund in that?
Yes, so sort of like we did with the Affordable House and Trust, we made it clear to them, and they made it clear to the applicants, that they have to make sure, I think they have a September date for, to go to those three who've been awarded, and if they don't have everything in order, it's like, thank you, we're taking it back. The one good thing about, one of the good things about the rest of these items is they're pretty much within our control. We're not concerned about the, well, except those community initiatives, but as you can see, they've already spent, most of them have taken both, they came in 50% increments. So we have better control of it. If we start, we'll pick a date, whether it's October, November, and then it goes to the sewer plant. I mean, that's, that's the easy fallback for any of this money that's.
Okay, so the second tier would be if there's money left over that's not been allocated or hasn't been encumbered, you're saying we don't go through another tier of other projects, it's sewer plant?
Right, because my goal is, as much as I love the federal government, I don't want to give them one nickel of this money back. And so, and we were concerned when there was a changeover in Congress that they might, because it was talk of a clawback, that if any municipalities hadn't spent the money, fortunately, they didn't do that, but if, when December 31st rolls around, that's it, game over. So if, we will have some internal dates that we have to decide what those dates are, and they will trigger us to either push harder on what's already on paper, or say, never mind, it's going over here, but Uncle Sam's not getting it back.
You don't have council jurisdiction over these funds, so I don't know that, other than reporting to us, which I appreciate, that we have much to add to this.
Thank you.
Time, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Counselor Benson.
Thank you, so just when we're, I was just going back and forth, just to clarify, when can, when does the money, like, when can we stop spending this money? You said it was at 2026, we have to, or it goes back to the federal government?
Yes, by the end of this calendar year, December 31st, 2024, we have to have this allocated, you know, assigned to something that meets the criteria of the federal government. And as Connor mentioned, this has to be reported to the United States Treasury. And so, once we have it in, all $23,235,468 in as encumbered and or spent by the end of this calendar year, we're in good shape, as long as it's spent, sorry, all of it is spent by December 31st, 2026. 26.
Spent by 26.
Yeah, encumbered by this calendar, end of the year, spent by 26, end of 26.
Counselor Gro.
I was just going to suggest that you give a quick brief on, on projects had to comply with a certain number of requirements, and that certain projects that may have seemed like good ideas couldn't for any number of reasons, didn't qualify by the federal government standards.
Right, I'll let Connor sort of go over some of those criteria, but that was the case when we put out the call for the community initiatives, that some of them just didn't qualify, and some of them would have been very hard to track, and some withdrew, and others we just didn't consider because it was just not going to happen. But Connor, could you go over some of the criteria for the Opera Funds?
Yeah, there's basically four big categories for them, so it's public health, early childhood, so school-related expenses, things like that, economic development, and infrastructure, and the big one in infrastructure, you know, in our favor is water and sewer infrastructure. So that's why we've been so focused on these funds for the new plant, because it just was a good fit for the award.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, so I just want to wrap up by saying a reminder that that tool is live now on the website, so anybody can go and see it. I'll be sure that we put this spreadsheet up there as a PDF, and people understand it's a snapshot as of the period of June 25th, when Connor put this spreadsheet together in its infancy. So thank you for having me, and I hope that was helpful information.
Yep. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The Consent Agenda.
Any councilors wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Counselor Gilman.
I don't have anything to remove, but I do have a question as to if we should be adding the July 9th special BNF meeting that we just had before this meeting onto that as an approval, or if we can wait until the next meeting on the 23rd to approve that.
Well, we're voting on that this evening.
So where, so where is it?
Very.
No, 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 I've read it, but, so we're voting it.
We're voting those transfers this evening.
Okay.
So like any other standing committee meeting, it's in.
So we're vote, okay, so we're voting it tonight, but the minutes won't be approved until?
They're going to be approved if we vote the consent agenda.
I don't see them on the consent agenda, show me.
Counselor Gilman, the agenda was revised on July 3rd to add that.
Okay, then I have an old agenda in front of me.
On the paper agenda.
The last item, standing committee meetings, and then if you look to the right, it's in a different font, a different color, special BNF 792024, under separate cover. Do you see it at the bottom of the consent agenda?
On the one that you get, it was on the table when you came.
What am I missing, Dylan? Show me.
Yeah, sure.
But that's, that's September, that's July 4th.
We have different copies, Val.
Here comes one.
I see it on this one, the one I had in front of me was not.
And it's the one that was posted.
Okay. I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, there was a revised agenda posted a couple of days ago, I think.
Thank you.
Understood.
Okay, a motion, if that's, we're done?
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Gro, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
That would be the special budget and finance standing committee report of July 9th.
Counselor Memmard, you're up.
So this is literally hot off the press, and thanks to Sheri White for her help this afternoon with these minutes. So we did have a special meeting as scheduled to address a typical annual event, which is year-end transfers to balance the City of Gloucester's 2024 budget. And there are, the matters that we're going to vote on this evening reflect over $2 million in internal transfers within the budget, which is grouped together in one special budgetary transfer, as well as three separate supplemental appropriations using our general fund reserves to fund deficits in the budget in specifically snow and ice and other areas that have come forward, so I will go ahead.
If it could be helpful, I don't know if all the councilors have this, Grace, could you forward that message from Connor to all the other councilors so that they have the SAs, the SBTs, and the breakdown of the transfers?
Okay, all right. So the.
Thank you.
First supplemental appropriation, number 25, on a motion by myself, selected by Counselor Worthley, budget and. Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, 2024 SA number 25, in the amount of $190,000 from the General Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, account number is noted, to the General Fund DPW, Snow and Ice, Bow and Salting, account number as noted, for the purpose of covering the snow and ice budget deficit at fiscal year 2024, year-end, and I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? Counselor Worthley.
I think, first of all, I support the motion. I, I think, second, I support it in a few minutes ago, an hour ago, Budget and Finance, but there's a message I want to also convey. It confused me for a while. We had a very minimal winter in terms of our own personal experience with snow this year, and not every storm is created equally, but sometimes a storm where it just rains and then freezes, it still takes as much mobilization and salt and sand. Sometimes it melts again, it has to be redone again later. But there's another provision that I learned last year, which is, we put a dollar number in for our water, I'm sorry, for our snow removal costs, and if we were to put a higher number in, in the budget, we have to keep it at that number the following year, forever. And so, it is slightly, in my opinion, artificially low in the budget, because we don't want to have to account for the worst of the winters. And so, it seems to me that on, even on a winter like this last one, which was not that bad by every stretch of snow removal measures, we're always going to be in this position, or we likely will be in this position for a long time, where we are finding money to fill the gap because that number is low, and it's low for a reason, because if we were to go to a more accurate number, then we're stuck at that point. So I just, just to be clear, this is not an over expenditure from the DPW, it's not mismanagement, it's the accurate number of what we spend, and we have to deal with it after the fact, because otherwise you'd have to account for it before a budget. I hope that explains it well enough. Thanks, Scott.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
There's an roll call vote.
Roll call.
Counselor Nolan? Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
Counselor Grace? Counselor Gross?
Aye.
Counselor Grow?
Aye.
Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Counselor Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Next item from Budget and Finance in our special meeting is a 2024 SA number 26 in the amount of $180,000. Yeah, that's right. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, 2024 SA number 26, in the amount of $180,000 from the General Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, account number as noted, to the General Fund Building Insurance, Liability Insurance, account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of covering building insurance deficit, budget deficit at fiscal year 2024, year-end, and I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion?
We just reviewed this with CFO McCorkle, and insurance costs, as I think many of us are aware, have generally climbed across the industry. This is not a reflection specifically of particular claims made by the City of Gloucester against our insurer. We're part of a big insurance pool through the MIA.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, you want to call the roll?
Counselor Nolan?
Aye.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
Counselor Grace?
Aye.
Counselor Gross?
Aye.
Counselor Grow?
Aye.
Counselor Majota?
Aye.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Counselor Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The third supplemental appropriation this evening is a recommendation by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, a 2024 SA number 26, in the amount of $475,000 from the General Fund Stabilization, from the General Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, account number is noted, to our General Fund DPW Facilities, Electricity, account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of covering the DPW Electricity budget deficit at fiscal year 2024, year-end, and I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Do you have a report, Counselor Memhard?
In, in general, CFO McCorkle just identified that the cost of electricity has gone up throughout Massachusetts, consistent with what was said earlier by one of our constituents, and also, in addition, the cost of electricity related to operating the new East Gloucester, East Veterans School had not been fully calculated, so that there is a higher budgetary line item this year at year-end than had been previously budgeted.
Thank you. Counselor Grow.
Did we have any discussion on whether or not the issues around East Vets and West Parish School have been resolved in terms of their ongoing electrical problems?
No, we did not. I think they're resolved at East Vets. And they were, I, I forget where I saw the report, but they were on track to soon resolve them at West Parish, I would hope. You know, part of the problem is low bid and proprietary software was part of the major problem with that. Okay. Any more discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Nolan?
Aye.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
Counselor Grace?
Aye.
Counselor Gross?
Aye.
Counselor Grow?
Aye.
Counselor Majota?
Aye.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Counselor Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
I'll just go ahead and note as well that after these three supplemental appropriations in response to a question by Counselor Gross, our CFO McCorkle indicated that there's still $4.6 million remaining in the General Fund Reserves. The last item before you is a S, is a 2024 SBT, Special Budgetary Transfer 11, so this one comes from within the budget, from funds designated for one department that at the year-end is, is going to be moved around to cover deficits in other departments. So it's a internal budgetary housekeeping measure, and I'm not going to read the whole list, which is extensive. It totals $1,698,153 in some 25 or 30 accounts. And the total amount is $1,698,153, and I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. There are any, there's, I guess there's really no report, any discussion on these? Any questions from the councilors? Seeing none, is this just a regular vote? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The July 1st, 2024 Ordinances and Administration Standing Committee Report.
Counselor Nolan.
Sorry. No action required tonight. One, the Community Development Director, Alex Kopelman, on an expired term from... Six. Only voted to recommend the appointment, but per city charter, this appointment also has to go through the planning board, or go into the full council of vote. Number two, a memorandum from the Sustainability Board regarding proposed Clean Energy Commission ordinances changes advertised for a public hearing on July 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Okay, there was no Planning and Development Standing Committee on July 3rd. That meeting was canceled. We have no public hearings and nothing up for council vote. So the next item is councilors' requests to the mayor.
Starting with Counselor Nolan.
I have no request from the mayor, but I do want to thank the DPW, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but they are short-staffed and work very hard for the city. Start from the day after the 3rd and the 4th of the parade, they did an unbelievable job cleaning up the city with a very successful parade and fireworks, and I want to thank the Parade Committee and the Fireworks Committee, and then followed by the 4th of July, and then this hot weekend that went through without a hitch. There were some things that happened with the trash company, but that's not reflected on the actual DPW, that's contractual obligations through a contractor. But these guys and women worked very hard for our city, and they did a wonderful job. The Boulevard and the 4th looked like nothing happened, and it was beautiful. Bring that up and thank them.
Thank you. Counselor Benson?
Thank you. Nothing to report to the mayor, but just to let folks know who are listening, who live down the fort, we're going to be having a neighborhood meeting next Tuesday, the 16th, at 6:00 PM, to discuss the ongoing parking issues. And in closing, I also want to thank our police and fire for keeping this city safe during the St. Peter's Fiesta. Our men in uniform, our men and women in uniform continue to protect our community, and they did an awesome job during the Fiesta, and also during the Horribles Parade as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gilman?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the ovation towards, for the Horribles Parade in the committee. I did not march, but I watched, and it was phenomenal. The bands were awesome at the Boulevard, and the fireworks were phenomenal. So shout out to all the commissions and volunteers who made these things happen. And I also wanted to just let the council know to save the date for Monday, August 26th, 2024, from 6:30 to 8:30, to celebrate National Women's Equality Day at City Hall. We have some awesome guest speakers that are going to be panelists, and it's going to be an awesome event. So we hope to see you all there, and I will be developing a proclamation, as we did last year for the Lanesville event, and I will be putting it on the agenda, and I hope you will all support this proclamation when you see it. We'll make sure it's on the agenda twice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grace?
I'm good, thank you.
Counselor Grow?
I've got nothing for the mayor. I just, a couple of quick announcements, Planning and Development. One, on April, on, on April, on July 17th, we will be having an initial presentation on 20 Main Street. I'm, I'm saying this because there, we, there's been criticism about people not being informed, and I want to make sure that people understand that we're doing our best to make sure that people know that meetings are coming up. But on the 17th, we'll have an initial presentation on 20 Main Street. This is not a public hearing, it's just a presentation by the applicant. But you want to tune in and watch and listen, please do. Also, the Planning Board had a subcommittee meeting last week, and we had a joint subcommittee meeting today between PND and Planning Board on options involving 3A zoning, and I would invite you to go back and watch both the recorded meetings, first one, July 2nd, Planning Board, and then today's meeting, July 9th, will be tomorrow, for some insight into the possibilities that we are considering. Again, want to make sure that people have an opportunity to see these things and to understand what's happening. And please reach out to your city councilors if you have questions. That's it.
That, on July 17th, is a Planning and Development?
Planning and Development Subcommittee, correct. 5:30 at the Harbor Masters.
Counselor Majota?
I've been emailing the mayor of the issues that I have for War Four, so nothing right now.
Counselor Memhard?
I'm not sure if I mentioned it with you all before, but we do want to thank National Grid and the support of former Counselor John McCarthy for getting, fortunately, just one lane of Brightside Avenue repaved, where they had done trench work for the gas work, that they had left a lot of trenches, but it is a substantial improvement in Brightside Avenue. It's not the whole thing, but I just want to give credit where credit's due, and it's a big help. Secondly, I'd, you should all be aware that we've had another successful season for the piping plovers so far this year at Good Harbor Beach. From one nest, four, four chicks, four eggs, two have finally fledged, which means they have spread their little wings and demonstrated independence from mom and pop. So the city is grateful for the support from Mass Audubon, which we pay, pay them for, and helping us supervise the piping plovers as endangered shorebirds, and also for Kim Smith and her dedicated crew of piping plover ambassadors. Thank you.
Counselor Worthley?
Thank you. I do have a few things to discuss, partly requests to the mayor, and just some things for the council's attention. I want to thank Counselor Benson for a nice walk through the fort two weeks ago. I'd love to come to that meeting. When is that date again?
It's going to be there.
Next Tuesday. I'd love to be there. I think that, yeah, hopefully the weather's good. Do you have a rain site if it is, if the weather isn't good? It won't rain. Let's just, we're working, okay. One of the things I've said throughout the last term, and I hope it was helpful, is that this is our first meeting of our second quarter of our term, right? We are 25%, a little more than 25% through our term. And as evidenced through tonight's short agenda, we don't have a lot of things that are council initiatives currently. We will eventually. And I just want to encourage my colleagues to put pen to paper and use the opportunity before us to set our agenda by putting things forward, because time flies, and before you know it, there's another election, and then some of us might be here, some of us may not be here. So I just want to encourage people to put things forward for us to work on. No one's going to like this one, but I have to raise it. I did a little research, the Harbor Masters position, and I'd like to make sure Counselor Gross hears this, because he has been involved in the Waterways Board, the Harbor Masters position, they're in interviews right now, I believe, or looking for someone. The job description says that the Harbor Masters reports to the CAO. The Code of Ordinances, which we're responsible for, says that the Harbor Masters reports to the Waterways Board on, on policy issues, and to the mayor on administrative issues. So the job description has been advertised inappropriately. I don't know who would have made that change, but it simply says reports to the CAO.
Well, they do report to the CAO, though, so it's not inaccurate.
Well, they report to the mayor, right? That's the, that's what the ordinance says, and it says that on policy issues...
So address that to the mayor's office.
That's what I'm doing, request to the mayor. So I don't know who made that change. I hope that doesn't mean they have to re-advertise and start all over, but just wanted to bring that to attention that we don't want to cut out the Waterways Board in that equation, their important group. I do wonder why our roll call is not alphabetical any longer. We have one person, this happened, I know it was the last meeting, but Counselor Nolan went first, and then went to Counselor Benson. Is that a, usually it's just alphabetical.
A quirk.
What's that?
Just a quirk.
Okay.
No, we skipped it.
No, it wasn't being skipped, it's just, we're bouncing around the alphabet.
Oh, that's true. You got skipped.
Right. Well, no, I didn't get skipped, because we went back to the beginning, but just, it happened two weeks ago as well. We went to one counselor, then back to the beginning of the alphabet. Matter, but it might matter. So we just got a report saying that our local revenue taxes have, I'm sorry, revenue resources have come in as of June 28th. The way that these things work, this is hotel motel tax, a meals tax, is the quarter is not aligned with the calendar quarter. So the fourth quarter for the fiscal year for local revenues is March, April, May, April, May, June, no, March, April, May, I'm sorry. Our numbers came back, we're just shy of $2 million on hotel motel tax, 1.976. We're just shy of $1 million on meals tax, 996,000. What that means is that the projected numbers for this year are 30% lower on hotel motel taxes and 20% lower on meals taxes.
Fair question for the administration on this.
It was stated that I was quote, cooking the revenues. I just want to reflect that the numbers have come back as expected.
This is, request to the mayor, please.
Oh, we, we did other announcements in Fiesta and...
No, and then you have to go around.
Okay. So, kudos to the police, fire, DPW. The Fiesta was a real success. It didn't look like there was a Fiesta a couple of days afterwards, and same thing with the parade, as Counselor Nolan said. and same thing with the parade, as Counselor Nolan said. I just want to invite people, my son Jude, I think most people have met him. He is on the Sale GHS team, and there's an auction on July 31st. It's all funded by donations, and so they're doing an auction at the end of this month. And it's a silent auction, a live auction, and I think there's going to be a lunch with the mayor as one of the options. We may all want to bid on that. Or, and also Senator Tarr is going to do something at the State House. It'll be a ride in a cruiser is another option, too. So that's something, July 31st. Just want to encourage everyone to be part of that, or donate if you could, but that is my son Jude's initiative, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there will be a block party this Saturday. Hope everybody who has two legs can attend, and four legs, I guess. One and a half. And it's a good thing that we have that extra revenue coming in because we just saw tonight that we had to transfer over $2 million. So it's not like there's a lot of excess money hanging around. And I think that that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Memhard. All those in favor?
Aye.
He beat you.